We wish everybody to observe. Though everyone here is under honor to behave as if they have had the injections, the vaccinations, then they can proceed without a mask. If you have it, you're required to socially distance and wear a mask. Some of us on the board will wear masks because we have health conditions that we're worried about. And do I want to take that more? You should be fully vaccinated. One is required to wear a mask and socially distance. This is personal choice. And should be a vaccinated person wished to wear a mask, be prepared to do so. Those who have not been fully vaccinated are advised to wear a mask and enter and visit the planning board hearing. They should try to socially distance themselves by standing in the rear of the room at a minimum of six feet from others. Refrain from talking to each other so the meeting can continue. Limited shares are provided in the front for who are fully vaccinated and feel comfortable sitting together. Observe these precautions. Remember, this is on your honor and there is still the Delta active coronavirus out there. You can use the mask, hand sanitizer, and social distancing works. We have extra masks, we have hand sanitizer. Feel free to use it. Please help me. Congratulations to our flag. Should there be an event of a fire, do not use the elevator, use the stairs over there or the emergency exit here. If you can't hear, let us know. We'll try to increase our volume. Joseph Hes?
Hess.
Hess. Hess. I can't read with my glasses on, nor can I read with them on. Joseph Hess, logger. Would you please give us a brief summary of what you wish to do for the town during the time? Yeah. What would you like to do there?
Selective timber harvest.
And you're gonna take on how many trees? 400. Do you have a forester?
No.
Yes.
There is a tree here. It says how many trees?
265 trees. Robin, have you been out there?
I have.
Frank has.
And Frank does. The violations are everything.
No, this is an old Yonka park. There's no problem. Site distance is decent. I believe they're coming out the existing driveway or somewhere right near there. Yeah. So driveway's already in place.
Notice is hereby given that the town of Orson Building Department on the 20th of July, commencing at 7:00 or sooner after, this matter may be heard by the town of Orson Town Hall 108 Canal Street. Application by Joseph Hess to conduct a selective timber harvest under Section 1112-45 of the zoning law of the town of Orson and Section 274 of the town law of New York State described in the tax map, Town of Orson, Section 73-2, Block 3, Lot 19. The physical address, property is 33 Seagle Road, Elgin, New York 12428. The planning board at this time will hear all persons in objection or in favor of this action. The lands are the Legudas property. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? Your name, sir?
Steve Benano. I have been enjoying 200 acres of the property that they're looking for. First of all, thanks for having me and I'd like to. I've been spoken to the lawner and one day I may log my land, but for preservation properties, I choose not to do that for a while. I'll be retiring up here in a couple of years. I actually put a deposit on that land, Rene Fernandez or Rene Anders, about 20 years ago. From what I understood, it was 40 acres. Is that how many acres?
40 acres?
On the online?
Yeah.
He's got more than now, he said about 40 acres. Okay, harvestable.
Yeah.
He's got other land, but it's just open field.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm right adjacent to the property.
And you're on the next one?
Yes. I have the log cabin. If you look at the field, you see a log cabin in the field.
I have something to say.
Way back.
Yes.
Yeah. So on the opposite side of the road. On the same side. I'll show you in a minute, it will be more clear. So first I was happy to find out it wasn't strip cutting where you're gonna wind up in the baseball field. You know? And then I find out it's selective, which makes me feel a little bit better that someone actually took the time to look at what would be salvageable. What I did was I have some aerial photographs of the property that if I could show the man, the timbering contractor, they could be even better understanding what I'm looking to do. I also have a copy.
Well, we would take them. You can leave it on the desk there, but we'll take them.
I'll give you more so you can follow it. So the first photograph is, if you turn it with the cabin, 1779, also lies on the right. If you look at the field, that property is on, that's my home. And on the left is Seagle. The property line, on the next page, you'll see the property line goes right through that tree line, left me into my field. See right here?
See right there?
Be careful.
Yes. My concern is that one on. Usually when I look out of my cabin, I see the tree line off the top of the line. I'd like that way.
What's it at 60 feet?
Uh, next picture.
Yeah, that's this one, photo number one.
This one?
Oh, no. That one is right over the field where the property goes into the wetlands. Okay? So there's only about a 20 or 30 foot buffer between the end of my field and that tree line to what is terminally wet, you know? Yes, that's another photo. This is at the end of the field.
Okay.
At the end of the photographs, because you see depiction of where the wetlands are. Looking where the logging is.
What do you have there?
There was nothing that's more than.
Let me, let me.
Don't.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not.
Let me, let me proceed here. Maybe I should, for those benefit of those who haven't seen logging in a long time here, read our regulations. The applicant will need to approve it from the County of Olson Public Works for the access, drive, and loading areas or from the village of the town. $1 million liability insurance policy naming the town of Orson as co-insured. Workers' compensation disability liability must be placed with the town. A $300 logging permit, 200, no way?
No.
A $300 logging permit to be obtained from the code enforcement officer. No clear cutting of the property. No cutting of trees within 50 feet of the property lines.
Okay. Make a world. I thought I was concerned.
No stream crossing without DEEC. Conservation approval. No logging in wetlands. All logs shall be loaded 50 feet from the road. No loading on public roads. All skid trails loading areas shall be graded, seeded upon completion. The property must be kept in a clean, neat manner at all times. All property lines must be flagged and/or staked up to the issuance of the logging permit to be approved by the code enforcement officer.
Okay. So my question is, I understand a logging road won't be on my property. The logging will take place 50 feet from the property line, which saves that tree line that it was. I have no more questions. Steve, seven minutes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Does any of the board have any questions? Does anybody else have any comments on this property? Does any of the board members have any questions or? All rotate your motions on sequel. Um, do you want to close the public hearing? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried on sequel. I didn't declare the town of Orson, three agencies, and the negative deck being declared. Unlisted action?
Yes.
And the negative deck being declared.
I'll second that.
On the profile vote, Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. O?
Yes.
Mr. Schmaltz?
Yes.
Mr. Alexandria?
Yes.
Dr. Longstreet?
Yes.
Who's the speaker? And I go with. On the action?
Motion.
Motion.
To approve.
With the conditions that you let.
Yes. I will do that.
I'll second.
On the motion, and we have a second, all discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
You have a logging permit. Who do you have that you got logging approval?
Correct subdivision.
Creating National Foundation. Could you give a brief description of what you wish to do here?
Sure. This is, she's a neighbor to the lot question, just a month after the National Foundation. It's approximately, unsurated, yeah, according to the tax rules, about every acre lot. And the shape of it is quite unusual. And you can see here that this lower portion next to Fort Monroe is practically its own lot. So essentially what Cara and the U.N. Act would like to do is transfer this portion of the property to Cara and then have this as a separate building lot. So we're just here to get here, to keep on this, I don't know, this moratorium.
I'm sorry, which lot is it going to be changed to?
Lot 1 is a golden heart. And then the depending National Federation would come onto lots.
The only change is this very tiny line segment where the swing from Lot 1 comes to Lot 2. It's about 20 feet long. Right now, this shows a lot divided. If it were divided, there'd just be this tiny neck of land joining.
Exactly. Yeah, I have those designs here. Unless you can see how it's made out.
Not only that, because there was a lot of weed.
So it makes sense to be divided. But it's not technically a natural subdivision. So we have plans to make sure that there's a lot.
Alright, I'm sorry, I don't understand. I don't see lot changes here. I see proposed lots. What are these now? One, one contiguous?
It's a big lot. And this little portion is the only lot lot we can create right here.
Big beginning. Big two. So this is, these are two. And then you're separating it by the 430 contour line. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
That's the only line. If you look, I know it's a very small scale, but if you look at the key map in the upper right, at the stippled line, it's shading their subject land. You can see on that map that the place where that little neck now is down, there's no line. All I'm gonna do is put a little 20 foot line right in that little spot and that's what we're gonna do. Yeah, I can scale that.
Usually our system. Yeah.
What's the scale on this?
100. I'm getting done.
I think it's more like 50.
Well, it scales.
And scale, what do you get for a road percentage for Lot 1?
Yeah, it's. You see this line determine which is an end scale. Of course, the surveyor, when they do the subdivision plan, will need to put the arrangement.
Do you have the road percentage for the rest of that lot? Not related?
Yes. Yes. The, it's 180 feet on the road, so that's sufficient.
Well, no. In the Ridge Protection District, you need 200.
Oh, this is Ridge Protection? I don't want that.
I didn't say either, to be honest. I mean, Ridge Protection, though. And again, this is off the tax map, so there may be 200 feet there in the road. And if not, the church is also owned by U.N.A.T. celebratory.
Frank, if you recall where that is, how can I look that up?
I'm looking in RP District and it gives us development standards. Lots have to be 7 acres. Lot width must be 200. Definitely 215.
Yeah, and that's what you have in your.
No, I mean, the lot width, I'm thinking that's.
Yeah, the lot width. Does it have anything in there for percentage?
Yeah, I didn't think there was a 200. No, there's a lot width requirement, but I didn't call seeing a road, a street pride requirement. Yeah. I thought it was more 50.
I can tell those directly from your taxi requirements.
It's a billion back here.
Yeah, but there's a difference between lot width.
Well, it would be a question. It's a question of the width.
By the way, sorry that episode. I'm the town planner, I have them all. While we're looking that up, I did have a few questions on the. Yeah. On the. Short DIA. On item 9, you have, I mean, I'll let you get there first.
Item 9. Also, now that takes two.
Yeah. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements?
They haven't, they don't have the local plan. I don't know how to answer this. I may want, but I'm assuming you're gonna go to code.
I think, I was.
As soon as they go.
I would, yeah, I.
How would you answer that?
I would answer that no.
No.
Because it's not exceeding.
Oh.
Okay. And then on number 12.
Oh, wait, wait.
Oh, okay.
No, no, because it's the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirement. So yes, they are going to meet or exceed requirements. Not to be difficult, but I.
Alright, okay, that's fine. That's fine. And then the following question is, if the proposed action will exceed requirements, describe design features. And then item 12. You for the, is the project site located in a redsection? Sensitive archeological site, you have a check roll? The unit where you said, yes. Do you have any idea what that is?
I don't actually. That was, that's one of those, like you said, an auto fill.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So it, that's part of why we're here.
Yeah. What I can explain about that is, and you could also talk to me about offline on this via email. There's a state website called RIS, R-I-S. And you can go in here and you can find out why.
They don't tell you much, they just tell you where to hit.
But then you can call somebody and talk to them. We can hear. That's, that's.
We'll practice.
They teach you that in town planning school, how to find people that can stay off. When you submit your preliminary plan and you get the survey with the lot lines, dimensions, and areas, then you can work on that project to figure out why it was.
I mean, we don't have a problem.
What would be caused, you're not. It's good to know why that is flagged, maybe. And going back to the question on the street product. Time of bid rate. In 11210D, this residential lot, so like a front lot line of a minimum length 50. But then the lot has to have a minimum lot width.
Which is an average of the.
Yeah.
So a lot lines. You're absolutely fine. You have plenty of lot lines.
So if you, in anticipation of that, you look at the definition of lot width and says that in circumlooking fact, you have an average width. But if you were ever going to divide lot 1 in further down the road into smaller pieces, then you have to. You have to lay out a road going in there and have lots on it. You can have a common ground width of 2, but once you get more than that, then you have to lay out a road to make up that. And if you wanted to do that now, I recommend you do it now rather than go through this and then come back and. If all you wanna do is a 20 foot line.
Tell a question, Daniel. Any other comments?
Dave Sherman, I have produced a memorandum for the board on July 8th, where I went over the standards. Does anyone have any questions about anything that I wrote to you?
Understood action?
Yeah, in the recommended actions, I recommended, in the last five, since I'm listed, prepare yourself to the agency. I also found that GML review is not required for this action. And if you find the script plan acceptable, you can accept it tonight. And then they'll need to submit a preliminary plan with the additional information. They certainly would need to get the survey work done with bearings and connections on line. So I don't think that they'll have time to do that. They're gonna have to hold a hearing next month. So you'd have to get it in the next days. So probably they could submit next month the preliminary plan. With preliminary plan, essentially, this worked up to the next step. The septic wells, how it's located, those sorts of things.
Now, you want to know what the adjacent owner, septic and wells are, but my question to you is, does the septic need a building, lettered for the size of this lot acceptable?
Well, I guess there are, there's two ways to, there's two ways to look at it. One is you can come in for just a division, but then if you want to develop a house on the site, come back. Or you could, you could design a house site during the subdivision process and get a septic location, a house site, put it on this plan, and then you got that as proof as part of the subdivision, and then you just need to get building from that house. So, but if all you wanna do is just apply the lot, spread known on it, and all that's proposed is done, division, no construction, no name disturbance. For that. Agree?
So our thought is, is that you might not be able to have it all ready for August?
Well, we don't have to dig test holes or anything like that. I know Phil has looked at the survey. I don't know if there are, but if you're expecting some semblance of accuracy to bounce by the people, we might be able to pull that off. If I don't have to do a driveway profile and I don't have to, I can get help department. I can even go to the plus for the next meeting.
What if the, what is the August?
On this frame.
That would be 16th. So it has to be.
17.
So you'd have to have, in order to get to that meeting, to return in your preliminary plan package.
August 3rd.
18th.
I'm here, that's right. I will see if we can do that. If you want to see the next month and.
If it's a public hearing, you can't just.
We cannot have the public hearing until we receive the preliminary plan. So this would be, we would review the preliminary plan on August 16th and then set the hearing for September.
Right, right, because we have to see it.
And then if everything's in good shape on 17th, probably can get this approved at the September meeting, which would be.
So when you have a public hearing, what do you think that would happen then? Done the September meeting?
No, the public hearing happens.
If, if everything is in and good, why is it third at noon?
Okay.
If the board then at the meeting on the September meeting.
If you can't make the August meeting, that would postpone everything.
But did you referals then to anywhere other than your Chris website? Is that what I have to say?
No, my review of Belton County.
Were the exception.
It was that you're not, you're not within 500 feet of any thing that they require review on. It's not affecting one action. You're not deserving anything.
And then if it's two lots, they don't want. It's in our exception. It's in their exception.
So, I guess, Mr. Chairman, if, if you make those secret motions, and then motion accepted, sketch plan.
Unlisted action. Does anybody like to make a motion on the unlisted action?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that this be, uh, an unlisted action, and we can call ourselves as the agency.
So, you have a motion by Jamal, seconded by... Okay. On the motion, Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ellen.
Yes.
Mr. Schmal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexandria.
Yes.
Mr. Uh, Will.
Yes.
Dr. Alonstee.
Yes.
And I about that.
Sketch plan, and then a motion to accept this.
Motion to accept the sketch plan, we make that motion.
All set.
On favor, uh, we will see in addition.
Okay. Thank you so much. Bye. Good night.
And here we go.
We are sure, Bob and I have signed the briefcase.
Oh, good.
But it says village one. We were on the last night, I have...
Do you have to order one for him?
Uh, we, 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 guys are talented.
What order you want?
Thank you.
And we'll say, our plan.
This is making the...
Hi, Hank. What is this? I can't read it.
Yeah, I have the same problem, I got glasses in my, in my eyes.
Yeah, you declared it because you sent it to the...
Uh, why not?
Good evening.
Please.
Do you have, for the record, uh, any more additional information from the first aid squad, if you want to access it?
Whoa.
I know you have some already, but...
We have a lot of people here, I mean, I mean...
Yeah. Could you introduce us to all the, the crowd, would you?
Could we?
Could you give an introduction as to...
Yes, I will do that, yeah. So, uh, with me tonight, my wife Patty, Elizabeth, a nutrition, Tom Baird of Martin New Guys, an engineering firm that did a noise study, Jesse Vogel of Craig Manning did a traffic study, and Marissa Weiss of Home Wizzing. What I would like to do is just take a brief moment to update the board about what's happened since the last time we were here. We weren't here in June because we had some more submissions to make, uh, further to the board in May, the public hearing started. And so, at that time, there was a request for a noise study, which had been completed and submitted two weeks ago. A traffic study was submitted and completed two weeks ago. Essentially, if we were to look through the town planners' notes for this meeting, the majority of them have been addressed. There are still some open items that we're working on, including the, uh, code items inside the barn itself, which we will certainly address, uh, so that that barn meets the code New York State Fire, Fire Commission's goal. Uh, what I'd like to do is just go touch on these and then give the opportunity each of the engineers to provide a synopsis of what they did and answer any questions that there might be. We will add the dimensions, number five, in Mr. Lawton's notes. We will add the dimension of the park on the site plan. Now, I did not receive the notes from the planner until yesterday, uh, sort of by accident, I asked if there was an agenda for tonight we were on. Typically, he does send a copy by email, and either I did not see it, or it was in junk, or it wasn't, doesn't matter. But a couple of these things could have been addressed, probably before the meeting, we will address them. Uh, also, there was, the board requested overs in the parking areas, where, so the cars, when they park, know how far they can go before they get on the ground, that type of thing. That, uh, is, uh, no, no issue, we will certainly block that. There was a question about plantings, we did provide in the updated site plan, plantings where the parking is to be. Presumably, I think the board is after, I'm not sure if they're after the shielding of the parking, so it's not seen from the road, or whether it's for light control when people leave the site, I'm not sure what the goal was there, but I don't think we'll have that committed properly. Um, we really think that the character of the location would be compromised if we put scrubs in the front yard where we are proposing backup parking for eight slots. We are going to look at moving those eight parking spots to the rest end of property against Marcus, and not having them in the front yard on the brick. We're going to look at that. I can't give an answer to that yet, but of course, those areas would have plantings along the roads to mitigate, uh, the sight and, and lighting. There was a comment on number eleven, uh, about bringing the warrant compliance, that I'm working with architects and inspectors to do that. You'll ask for inspection, uh, to provide the public officers to certify the depth and those things in that. Number fourteen, first aid squad information you have. The latter district sent me an email from the attorney representative district, providing us with details about turning radio and other specifications of the fire truck. And in that email, which you do have, that was the May submission, it said that they were, they will not provide any detail about fighting a, of a fire because they're required in any event to, to provide that service to, to anybody in the district. But we will depict on the map, Jesse will speak to that, the turning radius, if they decide, from off the county, look forty-two, also by throw, to fight a fire, they told me they would group, just the proximity of the building. We will show what we can on the map. There was a comment, I think, on, uh, number seventeen, about the height of the poles with the dark sky lighting, that, the whole height should be brought down, we had suggested twelve feet. Uh, the suggestion is to lower those to something of specified height, but that's easily done and makes sense. We want the light, not, uh, not lot lights beyond parking, very logical. We would certainly do that. We have sent the request, the application to the Department of Public Works in the county for access, I throw away for response, we'll provide that when we have. I believe those, the only things that I had, uh, comments about are coal. It's been three months now, our goal is to get some sense of what the planning board's desire is with conditions, expect at least some conditions, that's reasonable, and that we can, we can comply with. And we'd like to try to see if that should be done tonight, if we have some ideas, even though there's more submissions to be made to the board. I think that the planner did suggest that it's going to be delivery. So, for now, uh, the, uh, let's talk about the, uh, the noise study.
Chairman, I'm in the board. Um, my name is Thomas here, P E, Department of Urban Engineering. Uh, I've been doing, uh, sound studies and public noise measurements for thirty years. Uh, had a number of, uh, projects throughout, both in different states, among the contracts that are taking empty. Uh, and so, I experienced this pretty much in depth, going from kennels to, uh, major highways, noise barrier walls on the street, so, uh, a lot of experience with that, notice, uh, the case, uh, I waited for a project to do a noise study. So, uh, June twelve was a wedding picking place, it came up to the site, a little bit early, about an hour before it was supposed to start, and the first thing I did was take the background, what is the traffic, what is the noise level that we have on the road at? So, with that, I did about twenty-five minute measurement, uh, there were some vehicles that were coming to the wedding at the time, the guests were coming in, I paused the meter, didn't include those in the studies, finding artificial reasons, so this is the cars, trucks. Ended up with a level of fifty-six decibel. Now, what I'm using here in the table, if you have the study in front of you, there's a column on the right, gray, uh, it's on page five. There you go there. Now, in this table, pretty much, we summarize everything that was done in the, I'll take the pages, it's not very stepped in, stepped in that side. Um, so, on the novel rate, it's something called L-E-Q. Now, L-E-Q means the equivalent sound level for a certain time period. It usually represents about an hour. You take an instantaneous noise like a firecracker, but when you combine it with over fifteen and twenty minutes, it's really insignificant in that, that realm of time. So, what we do in environmental studies, according to New York State B D C policy, we come up with an equivalent level of noise that takes the undulations, those in the highs together, and then the low ones up. So, with that, uh, we've had a level of fifty-six decibel. So, the next thing to do was to, uh, measure the sound levels coming from the activity of the ceremony, the wedding reception, that was going on at that time. So, I, I waited, um, about, uh, started around five thirty, but it didn't start getting noisier with the crowd, and that's a little about ten minutes to six, so I started the measurements at that point. Um, and it, I had to cut it short after about four minutes, there were some distractions going on in the background that obviously weren't part of the wedding itself, and, um, I know here, the truck would go by very fast, I also had to stop that, so that's the second measurement you'll see in the chart, so that's kind of the way. We started up again a few minutes later, uh, and that was over sixteen minutes, and going through the different, uh, levels and the rises and durations of the broadcast, have you got some reference?
Yeah, uh, L, L ten, L ninety, L max, and L M, can you explain those so that we can...
Yes.
So, your constant would be sixty-three on property line eight, number three?
Correct.
So, your constant is sixty-three, so you're, I don't understand L ten, L ninety, L M, max and min.
Okay, um, sure, I can explain a little problem. All right, L ten, L ten is the noise level that exceeded ten percent of the time. So, what, this is a really sophisticated instrument that I use, but it's, uh, very, very, uh, very great for getting to a lot more things to be improved over here. But what it can do, it takes a statistical average, and it takes a measurement every second, which is important, uh, every second. And L ten means noise levels that are exceeded about ten percent of the time. So, if you take, you take an hour, about six minutes of that hour, noise levels are above that, or a little bit above, that's the L ten. Uh, the L ninety is noise levels that are exceeded ninety percent of the time. So, fifty-four minutes out of an hour, your level is going to be above that number. Now, that number there sometimes is used as the ambient level in, in, in noise levels. And New York State D E C uses it as the ambient level. So, we could say that, you know, we will have some noise that will fall, sometimes we're not able to say, listen, here, probably my age was, well, ninety was fifty-seven, but we did have a min of forty-eight, so sometimes it's below that. So, ninety percent of the time, it's up.
Max, you have this seventy-two.
The max on, uh, the first minute, it's up to seventy-two, yes. So, that was, that was an instantaneous thing, that was a problem. So, what happens is the average level rises a little bit, and it drops down pretty quickly, it's all statistics, it's all, yeah. For our, um, I included all this because the equipment, I said they can, I can take these numbers, so everything's here in the chart, anybody wants to...
Some of them are used like that.
It's the lowest level that was reported during the time period. At that time, on the first, it was forty-seven decibel, that's the lowest level. The highest of peak we had was the seventy-two in the truck. Most of the time, noise level is above forty-eight, and some of the time, it's above the bottom, that's the first problem. But the real, uh, impact, the real noise that you equate to that time period is the L-E-Q. And that's what Federal Highway Administration, uh, New York State D O T, New York State D E C, uh, considered the number, the value, to the equivalent exposure of noises to a person for a certain length of time. Uh, in this case, the town code doesn't have a specified length of time for their, for their decibel levels, it's set seventy-three for this time period, but it doesn't equate to the time period. So, when that happens, usually go back to...
Ambient noise, so it's the ambient noise, so it's the whole time, then...
Uh, it said, um, wait, the ambient level is, is not part of the noise, so...
It's only just...
Okay. So, the seventy-three is the max, but because New York State D E C, number of other agencies in the EPA as well, uh, use the L-E-Q for what the sound level for that time as the basis for determining the impact, that's what is measured here, and it's, it's pretty much the industry standard.
Again, the ambient noise level is from the time you started to the time you left, or is it just...
Um, the ambient level would be, um, in this case, we measured for twenty-four minutes, and that would be the ambient level over that twenty-four minute period.
So, that could be prior to people coming in, going, uh, the father, daughter, dads, uh, the rock and roll, uh, anything else that would happen, wouldn't be included in that, it would be only the ambient noise that was happening at the time of the judgment. There isn't anything here that broadens that out over the entire time your microphones were up. As ambient noise level for the entire, um, six hours or you're always...
That's a note that is, uh, basically background work, but the traffic may be proven up on the census, so the traffic is, is part of it.
At that time, it was twenty-one.
Right, it was twenty-one. And, uh, for, for ambient levels like that, typically, if I had one on for an hour, like the traffic... And that's, that's serious, also. And traffic, uh, usually you go fifteen minutes, and then it continues to change a little bit, you go up to twenty, after about twenty minutes, you have a lot of that in the traffic. That's all standard, that's, that's, uh, traffic, so this is the D E C, uh, probably. You said, uh, that.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, um, when we, from the, what was that, was, I can see how we had an equivalent level of sixty-three at the property. There was, uh, an event, eighty-two decibel event that, on during this measurement, uh, what happened was, the level of sixty-three went, the, the ATV went by at excessive speed, it went up to sixty-six, and then over the next few minutes, it came back down to sixty-three, the level of sixty-three. So, I decided to leave those, that transition noises in the study itself, because I could pinpoint the data when it happened and why it happened, and I had all that recorded, and it's a complete announcement as well, you'll see. Uh, so, we had sixty-three at the property. Next, uh, and move slightly south, which is a little bit further away from the barn, the side door was partially open, on the front, for some ventilation, so, what we want to do is, uh, find out what, what we're getting. So, we're a little bit further away. Um, now, when you look at, um, sound, throw down a minute, please.
That would be B or...
That would be probably my B, yes. So, one, two, three, four, work, I'll go down.
ATV stops, you're on.
So, uh, with the side door open, uh, measured sixty-one. That was over a ten-minute period. And I, and the reason why it's sixty-one and not, lower it a little bit further away, but it primarily has to do with where the DJs working with the bill. The higher pitch frequencies had a long way to go, blocked out by the people on the side. So it fits into what's called optic band analysis. And the higher frequencies are considered more annoying than them in hearing. So the town votes is measured with A-weighting. So A-weighting is when they put more emphasis on the higher frequencies. So if I'm measuring, say, ten, A-weighting gives a score of twelve. It puts more emphasis on higher frequency, because they're more annoying to hear. That's what the A-weighting scale. So some of those frequencies are knocked out, and we're a little bit further away, had some sixty-one. That sixty-one was pretty stiff. Uh, the ATV did again on five of the decibels, didn't have really something. Moving on to, any questions on that one? We move over to property line C. There was some concern that some evidence made that, uh, concern about noise levels over, uh, Marcus. So I went to the area of the parking lot, and I ordered, set up measurements there, and we ended up with about fifty-eight. Uh, and that was a fifteen-minute measurement. During that time period, the ATV would buy a gas pressure eighty-one, uh, meter, which took my fifty-five on the meter at the time, jumped to sixty-one because it was short for the beginning. Uh, so it jumped it up six decibels temporarily, and it started working its way back down, settled in at fifty-eight. I also noted there was a bunch of recent vehicles on, uh, most of the metro during that last five or so minutes. So it ended up with fifty-eight. If I continued on for another fifteen minutes, it definitely would have been down to fifty-five again. But we had enough data at, at fifty-eight. There's no, no reason as to the reception, or even the break, was a bad problem. So, uh, property line D, I went over the bridge and up the hill on Marcus. There is a horse, a horse bar, and a horse, horse fencing. And I understood that someone may have concerned about the horses and noise from the place. So I set up up there, um, got forty-eight decibels, uh, the background level was forty-six. I had one car pass me in that ten minutes. I didn't want to set up the instrument on that person's property. So I was actually in the road. My glasses on, I had a test in the park, so. So I didn't want to introduce anybody properly in that position. So, uh, a car came by about nine feet, ten feet away from me. And, uh, that's the seventy-eight that spiked there. So, um, after ten minutes, just in my experience, uh, we're at forty-eight. Uh, we would have settled back down to forty-six, forty-seven, but, um, again, a couple of decibels, even hearing cannot tell the difference between the two decibels. Uh, begins at three, so if I was telling you I'm at forty-five right now, it's like fifty-five, and then I changed to fifty-eight, you would only barely pay up the cell. If I change from fifty-five to fifty-seven, you couldn't tell. Lab instruments, fifty-five, fifty-seven, cannot tell. So a couple of decibels here, forty-six, forty-eight, um, I didn't feel it came from the bar or the passenger. I also wanted to get back down to the wedding reception, I wanted to get another measurement down there later on in the ceremony. So we had a little bit of a challenge. So came back down, uh, and that was around seven-thirty. Uh, ceremony was at the theater, it was twenty at the time. And I set up at the property line again, and I didn't record, I didn't put this into the report, but then I was in the sixty-three and sixty-five decibel range. So what I asked, uh, Bill to do would be to open the bar doors. Let's see what we had, we opened the bar doors. And I knew the level, it makes sense, right? And, uh, so we took a measurement there for about thirteen minutes. Ended up with sixty-eight, so we had five decibels more doors open, doors closed. Asked the DJ to put the music up as high as he was willing to do, without having any damage to anybody's ears. And we ended up with sixty-eight. Uh, we had, uh, another ATV pass by at eighty-four decibels, influenced it a little bit, but again, not enough, uh, to check the pressure. That, that pretty much summed it up. And everything else is pretty.
I got it, tell me. Thank you, Peter. What's the decibel zone about there, Peter?
On that, oh, that state. You have a shark. I'd say about seventy-five. Right now, I'm talking about sixty-eight.
Mine are rounding around sixty-five, so.
The, the, uh, the dice is quiet, but I don't want that.
Okay, and, uh, one last question from there. When, uh, measurement seven on page seven, rotation A. If you look at your instrument and show the sixty-seven point seven decibel, it doesn't appear, that reading doesn't appear anywhere on the chart.
Uh, no, that was a, that was an instantaneous measurement, so that was, that was one second at a time. So I was, what the meter was, what I had the meter set up to do was show the level every second. And I just took, wanted to do was take a picture of the meter in relation to the bar, so you could see how it's measuring with the doors open. And that, that's what that was about. Yeah, I, uh, that, that's the one.
So. I want to get off topic. Uh, I live on the mountain. And there is a hotel on two oh nine, and I live in Krax. And they have specialties, rock and roll. I can hear them, perfectly. There must be a mile. Got an explanation as to how it travels up the mountain through the trees.
Uh, what you're hearing on the lower frequencies?
Well, no, I mean, all of you, I heard that perfectly inside the house. There was no bass drum, there was acapella, and I heard it inside the house across the street. We defined those.
This was when it's doing his testing?
That's when he was doing his testing. Acapella. I couldn't imagine bass drum wasn't there on the, the rock and roll, uh, but that's, and, and it's uphill. In fact, it was better up there than it was at the property, at their property. And that's just what I personally.
I understand, uh, I live a mile of an avenue, so.
No, you will hear the whistle?
I hope the city posted quite ten seconds, but I can't get the city board to leave right next to their post twice. So I hear the whistle of order, and I can hear it, but, um, it's, it's the pressure, it's a sound pressure level that's measured by the instruments. And we can hear it, but the sound pressure level itself is measured, and it's not reaching the higher pressure level, so that's what's bad. So listen, I'm not dying one second, but I would say, because I, I know, it's the pressure that's not there that you report that actually pushes the impact.
To me, to hear the train whistle is inviting me being at home, you know, because I would hear it all night long.
So, um, you know, with, with that, the measurements themselves, they're susceptible, you know, price areas, first of all. That's really all I, I can say, I can't disagree with this, we carry, um, and I. But, um, it's, it's the pressure. You know, when you get, and you live next to a highway, if you're fifty feet from a highway, you're going to hear the truck go by at seventy-seven, seventy-eight decibels. Then you're going to hear nothing. And, and you're going to hear it again, and cars go by at sixty-six. It just works its way back. Once you get, I think it is a mountain. So if you're at fifty feet away, let's just say you have seventy decibels, fifty feet away. Drop by six for every distance that you go. Fifty feet of the road, we go to a hundred feet, that's seventy becomes sixty. Now you got to double it again. Now you go two hundred, drop. Then you got to go four hundred, drop, then eight hundred, sixteen, thirty-two, sixty-four. That's how it drops. So it drops with this, when that much lower, lower, less effect than the grid provided. So that's why when you're, say, you're beginning to do, if I want to, there, it sounds a lot less quiet, almost half, because ten decibels is half. Six is a lot, when you go further away, it still sounds pretty much the same, it's not too much different. So it's a lot rhythmic scale, um, trying to best explain it that I can. But that, that's why you're hurting, because you still have, you're still carrying. But the pressure, the pressure not there, decibel.
This, anybody from the board, do they have?
Jonathan.
Jonathan?
Yeah, um, at this time, you may want to discuss this matter that you were asking me to investigate. A consultant that the board could engage to review the marketing, just sound study. And I provided you with qualifications for the Lang Associates out of Fort Salonga. They work with their firm, which will work on various noise issues. I actually had heard that they worked on a wedding venue in Ocean recently. They might have some good weeks of experience wedding party. And, um, I provided you with qualifications, so because, uh, you know, we narrowly, uh, hire a, uh, consultant. Provide you with these, I would recommend that you engage them to review sound studies in, in Sularis, Green and Laris. Using, uh, town engineer, really doesn't have that much expertise in sound study. Is that right?
So I have a question. How come you didn't have a bass line at the barn where the music is? Or did you?
I did, the first measurement I.
First measurement you did?
Was with nothing going on at the barn.
No, I'm talking about with the music player.
I did, I did, that's the first measurement that I should, sorry, it's something to do with that. Was when the music was playing at the ceremony.
At page five?
Yeah, page five, uh, third one down.
He's saying not at the property line, he's saying at the barn.
No, I'm, I'm saying at the barn.
Right, at the barn?
Right at the barn.
Oh.
Because for all I know, you know, because you're hired by the applicant. Well, I know you may have said to, not you, or somebody may have said to the DJ, don't crank it up tonight because they're doing a sound study. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do know what you're saying.
You know, and, and this is one up before, you know, we had, um, why are we paying engineers for like twice? Why is the applicant have to pay for an engineer for something? And why does the board have to pay for the engineer? And I see the same thing with studies that I read in dentistry. You know, you can pay, spend someone to do a study, which will look good for you, doesn't look good for your neighbors. And I'm just, you know, and this was at a wedding. You know, I believe that the last meeting, we were supposed to have an independent, uh, sound study, not at a wedding. I mean, I understand that the wedding was going on, it's a good time to do it, even though there's not supposed to be weddings there. But, you know, without a bass line at the barn, the numbers, I don't know. You know, I'm sure the comment from the neighbors will actually tell us if it was loud. You know, we don't know. I mean, I, I, I don't know.
I can, I, I can tell you that, uh, I've sent forth to the board, as a professional engineer for thirty years, with significant experience in all the accounting, shopping, rail trail, and other things, uh, with the kind of planning work. And that's, I don't know, I would never put one second of anything on that.
I'm not saying you did, you are or did.
Yes.
I would have liked to seen a sound right at the barn where the DJ was.
I can tell you, I can tell you, and I, I did in front of him. I asked the DJ to turn it, and it's loud, which was bad. And I could tell, and I stood there and said, you can not, you can stay on the passion of the stuff. Then when we did the measurement, again, the barn doors open, to make sure this is loud as the people can go. And that's what happened. I've done this a very long time, and I know what we need to do, and I know the data needs to be correct. There was no modeling in this. Uh, if, if this, if this had a computer simulation of modeling, I would agree with someone that's giving it. But there, there's nothing here for it that's subjective at all, it's all subjective. And pure measurements that were taken right through a slasher, I used to calibrate before and after, very expensive setup. And done very professionally, it's nothing, it's nothing, it is what it is, that always offers what they're worth, that was given away. If I did go right in front of the barn, I would fit nine percent. But the town code requires sound level of the property, I suppose, property.
And it was probably the one even nearest to the barn?
Yes, yes. And it was the shortest distance to the barn on the property. And that photo, uh, the photo that shows over number seven, uh, that's the same location right through the barn. I, I have no communication with anybody. They didn't apply at all, started moving out, I had to leave a lot of time.
Um.
Anybody have?
I have. I have measurements between seventy and eighty, um.
I don't know, because I can't hear anything.
I have measurements across the street between seven, sixty-five and eighty, uh, eighty-five, uh, at six fifty-eight. Uh, from your property. And mine is not a technical instrument, but I do have them, I do have them. Um, we have had a recommendation, does anyone wish to move forward on hiring a, a noise consultant?
So how would that work? Are they just going to look at these, this study and say, yeah, it's true? Or are they going to, or are they going to set up a, a DJ there and, and do a sound study?
I was.
Cranked all the way up.
I was looking at the, uh, schedule there, uh, it would be up to the board to decide how they would want it to do. But I also see that there is something scheduled for August seventh. So it's up to the board or the noise study person, this is not my question, I don't know.
I, I would say that if you're going to have that, you don't say you can have an event. You would do, if you wanted separate noise, and have to do like a simulation, which, yeah, they can easily do it.
In, in my discussions with the Lang Associates, uh, your initial step would be to review the simul of the park, uh, duties. And review it desktop, and I would say, they use this, this is, this method is good, this method is not good. They would see if they had took issue with how, how it was done. Depending on the results of that, you could, you could ask them to come up to a regular park and set up a simulated DJ and measure that themselves. They would do that. Uh, if they would, they would want, they could just sort of do the desktop analysis first, they're not going to jump right in. Ideally, if they, if they took issue with some things, and there are few that need to do that, then they recommend that. So it's sort of the two-stage process, but they, they can, they can go all the way and engage a DJ they control and make a simulated noise. Higher part.
If I did that, make sure that the primary, uh, most, most of the crowds inside, the, the flapping, it's like that's, that's sure, that's got to. so that's, that's sure, that's got the signal too.
Tom?
Yeah. I'm sure here, I'll be answering. Silly question, but I'll.
No silly questions.
I'll do the. Um, let's say during a period of time, two or three day period, without any events going on, what is the level of DDs? Like Monday, Thursday, on a normal night, nothing going on, just the birds chirping, and the stars shooting. Is that a good baseline to go from? Um, but you need to compare, don't you, with like what's the normal experience to what did it be when you went on the.
Yeah.
I apologize if that's.
No, it makes sense, during, during the time of the, of the wedding, we had fifty-six decibels from traffic. Regular traffic.
That's just the normal.
That would be the level that you observe on either side of the road, on either side of the property. Um, New York City, you see ten decibels increases generally starting at different points. With the wedding going on, we had an increase of seven, on the highway, so that's, that's kind of, but it's still ten decibels below.
I think you used the word baseline, but.
Right, oh, you're, that's a good, that's a good.
But, but the baseline for a normal evening without any events would be about.
Four traffic or anything like that? Um, and that, yeah, so, yeah, no, I, let's say, more traffic go off, we got crickets, alright? Literally, literally, it's not crickets, like, um, forty-eight out there. It doesn't work, and, and that's reasonable. Uh, in the morning, you're in the high fifties, though, first, and I've shut up. I mean, I, some people say that's weird. That was involved.
So we have a, on the floor here, do we want to hire the consultant?
I would say it'd be a good idea. The only reason I would say it'd be a good idea is if we hire, as Dr. said, uh, it would be our consultant, and they can recommend to us, if the procedures were correct, if they are acceptable, are they the industry standard, and how the procedures of the noise study comply or do not comply with our orders? And then that will take away at, at least a desktop study for the procedures, so that will take away any reference to it being jaded one way or the other. And, uh, I appreciate much more comfort in that result. I mean, we have our consultants review other studies for that same reason. Um, I think it's just prudent for us to do our due diligence in that.
That is a motion?
Hmm?
A motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Let's be specific, if it, if it is B-Lang Associates that you want to.
Yes.
Hire, that'd be an emotion, please.
Yes. And, and, and to start off, to just, just do a desktop study to get their recommendations on initial.
I'll second that. Um, the motion, any discussion? Repeating none? All in favor?
Aye.
A please? Good. Any traffic study?
One question I might ask if I may. What's the anticipation, seeing that how well that's such a case? In the event, hoping for very prominent that whoever, B-Lang, you, uh, I said, top review and create that, everything was called according to standards, that's, that's, but in the event that they gave that, and it's happening, or even if the initial desktop study was filed, we don't, we don't want that. Just find out the study that's already taken, was, okay. For your estimate, right, how long that, that, I don't know, that, that's not part of the approval. If I hire a consultant, I should be, uh, like, for ads, it's not quite.
We, I don't know their schedule, and it isn't something I do every day, so that I could give you an answer. I think we could make it, um, evident to them that maybe, should they need to do more than just a desktop study, they will let us on, do it as speedily as their time and their constraints.
Did they give you any time table and see what they remember?
No, I, 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 I think they could, they could review the Mark and Judas work probably within the next fifteen weeks, I don't see why not. If they do, after that review, want to schedule an actual second test here at the park, I, I, I'd find out how long that would take to set up, but, but I think this first step would be done.
I'll open the public meeting in a few minutes here.
And also, just, just so you're aware, uh, they've got a traffic engineer ready to present. And, uh, I do have Mr. Barry from Nelson Pope Traffic Engineering, who they're got, he's on the line right now, uh, come out as a speaker at any time. So, before you, um, I would just suggest that maybe before you open up the public summit, we do the transportation section first, the jet presentation, transportation part. And then, uh, we want Barry to respond, we have the demo for him, that, uh, he's here on the line.
My name is Jessica, I'm a ICP, and I have a quick answer. Eric, you have highly experienced doing sound studies, you have, and so you've explained that. Um, so you have for you, uh, a few, uh, in accordance with standard engineering practices. Uh, we again, look at existing conditions, we have site, uh, Ulster Heights Road carried that six hundred vehicles per day, according to CPT, Marcus Road carried that hundred vehicles per day. Um, we noted that peak hour, that sixty vehicles, um, on Ulster Heights Road. Uh, done the trip generation for a typical wedding event at Wega Farms.
Excuse me, could you bring up the volume a little bit, or could we just turn that off?
I'm trying to beat the ladder. So, uh, just to recap, uh, we conducted existing conditions, um.
Awesome.
We have volumes in the area, and we have to escape from transportation. Uh, we did conduct trip generation assessment for a typical wedding event. We looked at a Friday evening rehearsal dinner, and then a Saturday reception. Uh, noted that, assuming on average, a two-person-per-vehicle, uh, carpool rate, that the peak arrival would generate about forty-five trips in one hour, which equates to about one vehicle every one and a half minutes. Um, there would be presumably less traffic also during the peak departure one hour. Um, this is less than the standard DOT and Institute for Transportation Engineer threshold of a hundred vehicles per hour, which is typically considered, um, the requirement for off-site analysis. Uh, in addition to the traffic assessment, we did assess parking. Uh, we provided an overview of parking operations on the site. We found that there's, uh, fifty-five spaces that can accommodate a hundred and ten guests. Um, therefore, there would be sufficient capacity for that. Uh, we conducted a crash analysis as well, and that was in accordance with the DFC Highway Design Manual. Um, we looked at a five-year period along Ulster Heights Road from a little past Marcus, all the way to the, um, middle of Ballinville. We also looked at the entirety of Marcus Road, and we found a total of twenty-one crashes in the five-year period. Um, the majority of them were property damage-only crashes, and were caused of an animal or a collision with a mixed object. There was one crash that occurred, um, in the vicinity of the site, and we did not expect any change in the crash pattern as a result of allowing weddings to be held at Wega Farms. Um, in addition to the traffic study that we submitted, we did receive a comment letter. Uh, as noted earlier, we received turning radii from the fire department, and working to address that comment as well. Um, we conducted a site distance assessment this afternoon in response to the comments that we received. Um, what we found was that, in general, uh, we looked at intersection and stopping site distance. So, we available distance that vehicles exiting the site would need to look left and right to see oncoming traffic, as well as, uh, vehicles turning left into a site, looking straight to see that oncoming traffic. Um, that would be intersection site distance. We also looked at stopping site distance, which would be, uh, the amount of space a vehicle needs to recognize an object in the road, um, process it, and stop in time without making a collision. We found that, uh, the two-site driveways on Ulster Heights Road will meet the, um, guidance set forth by the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials. Um, once there's some clearing of trees, there are some trees located to, uh, the west of the site driveway, um, that kind of limit visibility, those are in the county ride of light. Uh, but if those are removed, they, uh, that would improve the intersection site distance. Stopping site distance was still met. Um, and then also on, on Marcus Road, the intersection and stopping site distances will be met. Um, particularly, it's stopping site distances, we don't see any cause for concern. And all of that will be outlined, uh, in our response to the comments. That covers it.
Tom?
Um, I think at this time, I'd like to introduce, uh, Osman Barry, who, uh, wrote the flight fourteen committee, and, uh, Osman, if you could just introduce yourself, and you've just been listening to Craig Manning, it sounds like they've already started to work on some sponsorship memo. Go ahead.
My name is Osman Barry, I'm an engineering from Nelson Pope. I've reviewed, uh, the traffic study done at Wega Farms, and I provided the comments on my memo. And as I had the presenter just mentioned, I've started responding to the comments, and I would like to re-see them and evaluate them. However, I did not, um, hear the response in the traffic volume on the roadway. As they mentioned, uh, the daily traffic volume in County fifty-two is six hundred vehicles, and hourly volume is sixty. In the, in the report, I've mentioned that comparing the forty-five to the traffic estimator, that would create an increase of between forty-eight percent on the roadway. However, uh, the traffic volume visiting the site would be over a one-hour period, so that has to be compared to the one-hour traffic volume. Comparing the forty-five vehicles that are going to add to the site during the peak period, again, sixty vehicles, that would be an increase of seventy-four percent in one hour, which I believe would change the character of the area, and it would be noticeable and seen by everybody in the neighborhood. So that need to be analyzed, and any impact created by that need to be analyzed, see that. I've already responded based on the presentation provided, and I, I, he mentioned something about designing analysis when I meant that I would do that. When it comes to the parking study, I looked at the parking, they assumed one hundred and ten guests, referring, maximum one hundred and ten, that would be, that would depend on the board having certainly limit as the condition for approval. Based on the one hundred and ten guests, and applying two per, two per car, they are providing fifty-five seats. However, there's something indicated in the report that the one hundred and ten guests include employees and parking attendants, so that needs to be clarified. If there are additional employees, above and beyond the one hundred and ten guests, the parking provider would not be adequate, so that need to be analyzed.
Good, um, so I, I guess I would just want to clarify, in, in response to the change in character, what type of analysis are you looking for? Um, you know, we're talking about, um, a seventy-four percent increase, but that is during one peak hour that may occur. I believe it's up to eighteen times over the course of a year. Um, you know, there's plenty of other hours during the day that, um, you know, that impact wouldn't change the character of the neighborhood, and so I guess I would just ask, what type of analysis you're looking for in that? If you, um, believe that we should do a level of service analysis, although we do not meet the, uh, hundred-vehicle threshold required for, um, off-site analysis.
Um, well, those analysis would be tied to noise analysis, to see what would be the impact. If you double the traffic on that over the neighborhood period, that's missing in the noise analysis. Basically, I don't think that was included, and I have a requirement of not including analysis much, so that can be included.
But, and, uh, for the time I think we, that the noise analysis was conducted during an event, which would have that traffic already included.
Would there be any way to, uh, uh, I don't know, provide some sort of shuttle bus service? Is there any, uh, common place that guests are coming from, so that, uh, the hourly arrivals could be lessened? In any way?
Uh, one of the questions I have is, what is the capacity as I wrote?
Uh, certainly, um, so, that is considered a low-volume road according to ASHTO standards, with six hundred vehicles per day. Um, typically roadway capacity could be up to, uh, twelve hundred vehicles per hour in a single lane, I believe. And so, um, that, that would, it would take a significant amount of collision traffic from a lane segment standpoint to reach the capacity of the road. Now, intersections are typically where capacity constraints are felt the most. Um, you know, typically, if you were to consider stop signs or traffic signals, that's where drivers experience delay, you have vehicles queue back into one another, and that's where that hundred-vehicle threshold set by DOT and ITE comes into play, where it's used as a tool to screen out where capacity issues may occur. And below that hundred-vehicle threshold, the DOT and ITE say that, uh, you don't experience any capacity issues, and therefore you don't need to, or it's not recommended to do any additional capacity analysis.
Alright, also, also in here, you said that, uh, you use the most current information, uh, available from the DOT. Um, do you, you know, what time, what time of year was that done and so on? Because we all know summertime here is considerably different than wintertime, and, you know, that also has an effect on percentages and all those sorts of things.
Uh, correct, so I don't have that information directly in front of me. I believe, though, that we were using, um, average annual daily traffic, which does typically contain a seasonal factor associated with it to account for that variation.
Because again, this is, this is going to be operated during some of the busiest months of the year, here, as far as traffic.
Yep, so, that was, that was, right, may I add one?
Yes.
After that, I do agree that the road is not full of capacity. However, the nature of the road itself, there has no traffic volume. That mean, if you double that traffic, it is noticeable, and the side distance analysis, cars are gonna be entering, you want every minute in that drive, and it poses safety issues if the side distance is not met. So that additional volume can create some safety issues, even though the volume is not significant.
Correct, and, uh, as we noted, we conducted the site distance assessment, we do look forward to getting that to you in writing. Um, but, uh, site distance does meet the ASHTO and DOT guidance, and therefore there is no safety concern.
I would like to see a plan, as you had mentioned, when you get the, uh, some trees down, to be able to do the, the side measurements. I would like to see a plan to show sidelines, showing what's in that, when you cut down, open, how much, how much you have.
I have a question on the, uh, since, uh, you mentioned the traffic study and the amount of cars in the sound study. Was this a full-capacity wedding field or a patio? Or was it forty people compared to a hundred and ten? We don't know?
Between eighty.
Eighty people? That's.
That's about it.
Yeah.
That's why we asked for a match of one ten.
That's why we asked for a match of 110.
Right.
Can I comment on the, Mr. Chairman, on the summer traffic? What Jesse mentioned was, and what the consultant mentioned, was that a higher percentage impact on one hour? If you have 600 cars and vehicles in a day, on average, for the full year, was that what the full year? And then, so our additional traffic is a, it becomes a 70% increase in traffic. However, in the summer, the traffic on the road probably doubles. So if we're just taking a look at the number of vehicles in the summer, and our fixed number of vehicles that attend the wedding, the percentage impact on the traffic is much less probably handled, on point today.
I do know, at a certain time period, coming home from grad school, it becomes a little hairy on that road, specifically because people are trying to get to their place before a certain time of the day. And it doesn't matter that I'm exceeding the speed, they want to double the speed I've already exceeded, so. It's, it's, it gets hairy out there, and they'll pull in front of you and whatever. So, there is the, the summer venue. And then there's also the summer venue where everybody's looking around and watching, and you're traveling slower than you would in a snowstorm. So, we have both.
And just to clarify, you know, from a safety perspective, with the crash analysis, that was, those 20 crashes total over five years, summer, winter, all that.
Those animals, you know, they got a ton of cars.
Correct. Animals, and.
Trees.
So, you know, I think that, where, kind of, character of the road is.
I'd like to see if we couldn't speed this along, by maybe you and the traffic study person email each other, what if, what if, and then present, hopefully you could present something at the next meeting.
Yes, we'll.
And because we have a sound study being done, and a traffic study that's almost complete, we'll open the public hearing, but keep in mind that we're not going to close it tonight. We are going to keep it open till at least the next meeting. If there is something that you would like to say that we haven't heard before, please feel free to open the public meeting now. Just stick to the zoning issues, not anything not relevant to the zoning issue and/or, or the wedding venue. Also, if necessary, we'll keep it to two minutes, but for now, we'll just keep it open if it can, it can be done that way. So, who's first? Your, your name, please.
Hi, my name is Bill Kirschberg. I'm from Fabricale, I'm named Kirschberg. My associate Diana Green, who represents me as the homeowners here, were in the back. We have, we have some documents for you, including a letter that we sent by email, a letter from Mr. Lawrence, a C and S to give you, as well as a picture of the decibel level on June 12, 2021, which was a big protest.
This is subpoenaed?
So. So my first, my first issue is, to give respect to the Coons, why is the board hearing this at all? Mr. Coons has gravely violated the laws of enforcement by holding events that are prohibited by your code. And so, and he keeps doing it. He just admitted, he did it on June 12, 2020. There's nothing in the code that permits him to do so without a permit, and he keeps doing it. And he did it before the amendment, and he kept doing it. He doesn't come here, not only does he come here with unclean hands, his hands are in the mud. So my, my, the real issue is, why should he be heard at all until he starts complying with the code? What you're doing is empowering him to violate your laws by holding events. In fact, he wants to hold an event on August 12. And I don't know why this board or the code enforcement officer is permitting him to do so. He doesn't have a pre-existing non-conforming use. He never did. To have a pre-existing non-conforming use, the use has to be lawful prior to the code, the code, the code. His use was never lawful, because your code, like most codes, are written in the negative. So prior to the amendment, his use of using the barn as a venue for, an event venue, was unlawful, because it was not permitted under your code. So he's been committing unlawful acts consistently. And yet he comes before you, asking for permission to do what is perhaps a lawful act. Second, he doesn't, he doesn't come before you, I'm sorry. Second, he, he wants to, he seeks a special permit under your code. To do that, he's got to demonstrate under your code that it is safe for the community, it is proper for the community, it doesn't interfere with the character of the community. Local law number two, regulating event venues, states that it's the intent of a local law to establish procedures and requirements for allowing the conduct of event venues under the law enforcement. It says, an event use the accessory use of land, structures, or buildings. This isn't an accessory use, it's a primary use. There's nothing accessory about it. This place is owned by an LLC. Its primary use is a bed and breakfast, the whole wedding. That's its primary use. That's been its use for years, and he's been violating the code using that. So you shouldn't, you shouldn't even be hearing this. Then you have your special use criteria. The planning board, enacting upon the site plan, shall, in the case of those, use is also requiring special use permits, be approving, with a modification or disapproving, this special use permit, whether the proposed use will have a detrimental or positive impact on the adjacent properties. It's going to have a detrimental impact. I know, he's got a noise guy, he's got a traffic guy, I hear him loud and clear. My people, you have decibel meters also, they're showing 85, they're showing 85 decibels on June 12, 2020. He's got, he's got a noise guy that says, didn't bother going to the barn. Dr. Longstein's right. He should have, he should have had, he should have had a noise level of 40. In addition, according, according to Mr. Coons, this place had 80 people out of 110, which is what he wants. So we don't even know if the noise guys, the noise, the noise level is, is good. In addition, what the noise person failed to say is that noise, the, the, the way they do, the one way to do noise is you take the amount of noise over time, and then perhaps you average it. So if you can picture a graph, X and Y, you know, X and Y, with X being time and Y being the amount, and you draw a line over that, you get a mean. You don't know the variance. In other words, you had data points along this line. You don't know, and he didn't mention what the variance is along the line. So you don't know, you go high, low, high, low, are there outliers? You don't know. And he didn't tell you. Whether the granting of approval will cause an economic burden on the community facilities. That's why he's got the traffic up, because he says, well, look, the traffic's only going to increase, you know, a limited amount. Your, your traffic person is right, it's going to increase 74%. There's no reason to give him this. Whether the site plan indicates the property will be developed and improved in a way which is consistent with the character which this chapter and the town's comprehensive planner intended to produce. There's no, there's no event venues in this area. There's nothing. There's no, there's no, there's no Airbnbs, there's no weddings, there's nothing here. It's inconsistent with it. These people came up, live here because of the occult nature, they want to hear crickets. They don't want to hear rock and roll. And that's their, and they're entitled to do that. That's why they live up here. I have, I would just ask, in my letter, to, because I only have two minutes. So I'm not going to ask you to read our letter into the record, but I ask you that it be part of the record. If that's acceptable to you. And I ask that, I'm not going to ask that just the Lawrence's letter be read into the record, but I ask that it be part of the record, if that's acceptable to you. And I also ask, there's a picture that I gave you of the 85 decibels, using a decibel meter, which anybody that has an iPhone has one, can tell. And they measured it at 85 decibels. It was pointed out to me while, during the, during the traffic's presentation, that some of those measurements were taken today. I don't know what that has to do with anything. You want to know what the measurements are when there's a wedding. You know what was also missing from the presentation is that when Mr. Coons's daughter had an event there, there was a fight outside, there was noise till 3:00 a.m. There were drunken people. You know what's also missing, and Mr. Lawrence points this out, is that he's trespassing on Mr. Lawrence's property. So, he doesn't come here with unclean hands at all. What you should do, in my, and I say this with due respect, hold the whole thing in advance. Hold the, you don't need, you don't need to hire a traffic, you don't need to hire anybody. Hold the whole thing in advance. Let him comply with the code enforcement officer. Let him do what he's supposed to do. You don't need to do anything. Save yourself, save yourself the money. Hold it in advance, and when he comes to you and he says, yeah, he complied with A, B, C, and D, and the code enforcement says, yeah, he's not in violation of any codes, then let him come back here. But right now, you don't need to do anything. You don't need to spend on consultants, you don't need to do anything. Put it all in advance, and let him come back, when and if he decides to comply with what your laws. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Kate Hexer. I live at 577 Ulster Heights Road. I just want to touch on the event that happened Saturday, July 3. In the early morning hours of July 3, my oldest daughter, she's three, came into my room approximately 2:00 a.m., saying it was too noisy and she was scared. I just assumed she wanted to come into bed with mommy, so I let her, I let her come into While I was lying there waiting for her to fall asleep, I heard the noise she was talking about. There was a banging like metal on metal over and over, and it sounded close. I shook my husband awake, and he heard it too over our fan. We got up and came out to pick people inside out the window, and the banging stopped. Very soon after, we started hearing screaming. We saw flashlights all over the property and down by the water, that a car sped out of the driveway within at least 60, heading towards Elmo. My first call to the police was around 3:00 a.m. After the car sped out of the driveway and the screaming. Before the police arrived, another vehicle drove very slowly by my house and stopped by my car and opened and closed their door. Two more vehicles left the property blasting music and speeding, so I called the police again to let them know that people were leaving. When the officer finally showed up, I felt such relief. Right up until I saw those people running into my yard. Do you want people who run away from the police, running towards your home with their children inside? This was very disturbing to me while it was happening. Not only did we find out more after, that this party had been shut down by police once already. And I know what you're thinking, who's going to this party? The renters? Who says Airbnb was the wedding? No. With Mr. Coons's daughter. After they got shut down somewhere else, they came to the barn. And my question is, did you know they were going to the barn? Did they just show up? They both know where I live. They know I have two small children inside my house. Does that sound like I want to have a party next door where people are getting assaulted? Somebody got hurt over there that night. Right? My daughter is afraid to sleep in her room, she still sleeps in bed with me. And for what? They're putting my daughter's safety and my peace of mind at risk so that your daughter can have a party? I don't understand. He's not even allowed to have events there. But now we're having a party, and people are getting hurt, and they're running into my yard? No amount of shrubbery will stop people running into my yard. None. Play all the bushes you want, stop to stop people from running into my property. I watch them, my husband watches them. What do we do? What, what are we allowed to do if people who are running from the police run into your property? What's the law say on that? Anybody know? They got my husband with home, what if I was there alone? What do I do to protect myself and my kids? God forbid somebody wanted to run into my garage or my basement. Then what? Now what do I do? Nobody? Hey. Thank you. Oh, also, the other thing about the traffic and the added traffic in the summertime, I would like to point out that the city dudes don't drive on Saturdays, but when they do drive, in the vans and the buses, and the vans and the buses, there's way more cars than whatever he said on any given day in the summertime. And I can film double that easily, easily, on any given day in the summertime. Thank you.
Can I talk on behalf of whoever the party.
Let the public speak, and then.
Let the public, if anybody else has anything to say.
Hi, my name's Desiree Hush, I am on 560 Ulster Heights Road.
Hi, Jeremy.
Yeah, Desiree Hush, 560 Ulster Heights Road. To comment on that weekend, I was actually at a town with my dad, we were house-sitting, and I asked him about it in the morning. He said something like 2:00, 3:00 a.m., and he actually thought there was multiple cars and it felt like, like there was lots everywhere. He heard fighting and shouting, people running around the barn, and the parking lot. I know I wasn't there, but he was sleeping on the other end of the house, which is my main room. Probably he was all the way in the back of the house, two air commissions on, like, the whole camp, so. Just wanted to comment on, I love it, it was a bit of a very, I mean, it was a very hard time.
Hi, Kate Rosa, by 400 Ulster Heights Road. So, I want to start with the wedding reception that was held on New York Square. Wedding reception that should, should not have been held, because he did not have any permits to have weddings at the barn. There was maybe 70 people there, that included his staff, that was attending. We have it on film. 35 cars, not the 55 that he was supposed to have. The noise study that was conducted, so, I can tell you that I've sat in many events that they have held over the years. The level of the noise from the DJ that was playing is not typical of a regular event that happens there. No matter what they told you, yes, the DJ had turned it down that day. It's, I, I lived there, I lived through it, it's not how it is, it was not a typical event that they had. The, I believe it was Mr. Odom. Mr. Odom asked what it was like at my house on a normal day. This is my house on a normal day. Here's the word. This is my house when the Coons decide to infiltrate my neighborhood and have a wedding that they're not supposed to be having. Please tell me, basically, if you'd like to hear that six times, eight times, 10 times, 18 times in your living room. I can hear it. The experts can hear it. Desiree can hear it. Rex can hear it. Mr. Gratio can hear it. I don't care what his noise that he says, this is what we hear in our living room. I ask if all of you would like to be sitting home with your wives, your husbands, and hear this on Saturday night. Would you like to do this dance? Because I can do it every Saturday, if you get a 15 wedding, you get a eight weddings. Because I can do it every Saturday. If you get a fifteen wedding, you get eight weddings, you get six weddings. You can all come to my house, and we can do the stands together in my front yard. No, we can do it right in the room, because you've been here for six years. And the noise study was not conducted at every single person's property. Mr. Lawrence, who owns the property in between the Coons's property, was not part of that noise study. He is right there on his property line. Bless his fifty-eight. But Mr. Lawrence will be on the phone. Can you hear from him? Now, let's get to the party that was. I don't know what they can tell you. I don't know what justification they can give you to have a party in this barn, again, where they're not supposed to be having it, but we'll put that aside for a moment. Where the police are called. I don't know what justification they're going to give you. It was a mistake. She really didn't want to have it there. It wasn't meant to be there. Or did they really know about the event? And that just shows they have no control over their property. None. So, the police were called on this specific event? What could possibly happen in the future for future events? Because I can tell you, some of the receptions they've had there have been a little rowdy. But why, like Peyton said, why should her two, three-year-old daughter have to suffer through then having events there? Then having parties there? There's no excuse for the police coming and calling. I don't care what excuses they give you, what they're going to say. The police were called at 3:00 in the morning across from my house. Would you allow the police call at 3:00 in the morning across from your house where you live? I'm going to say no, because, again, what sane person would want that? I just want to know, I ask you this board, when is enough enough? When can we have our neighborhood back? When can we not have to deal with this anymore? You heard the video. You can hear birds chirping. They come in, they hold an event, it's chaos. It's chaos. Mr. Coons goes into the middle of the road to stop traffic, to park. I have pictures. My husband has a video. There was a picture, uh, he has a video of him in the middle of the road stopping a car because he's trying to get them to park. And then there's three cars behind that one, and then there's one racing down the road. That's the problem with the traffic. It's not how many cars travel on it in a given year. I don't care that it's six hundred. I can sit outside and count the cars if you'd like. It's the fact that this man was out in the middle of the road and stopped cars. Mr. Constable, you saw it. It was there. Stopped cars. Oh, no, park here. Oh, no, park up there. I do have cars backing up. That's the problem with the traffic study that this gentleman conducted, and he did be part of it today. I don't know what he was doing today. He was out there on a Tuesday, because that's going to give you the category information from a Saturday to a Tuesday. But who, how is that okay? That's the problem with the traffic I'm trying to explain to this board. It's not the, it's not the volume. It's the fact that he's in the middle of the road stopping traffic, and it's backing up, and then you have cars coming down, coming down. I had a woman say to me, "Oh, I saw it. He was stopping traffic. I had to slam on my brakes." I don't know where else to go, because I don't have much more to tell you that this is a nuisance to us, that it's affecting our lives, that if you give him this, we have to deal with it six times, eight times. I can play you the song again. I can record the next one he has, because I'm sure he's going to have to live there without having any permission, because, again, that's what he does. He just does what he wants to do without any permission. He took over Mr. Lawrence's property, cut down the man's street, and put a pathway to connect us. How is that okay? How is that okay? It proves he does what he wants. He does what he wants. When is enough enough? When can we have our life back? And not have to worry about this nonsense. It's nonsense. Who would want, any of you, who would want to live where we live, where we live? And I have to tell you, I'm so tired of him standing up and telling you guys. I've heard him tell you, and I've heard him tell the ZVA. When he's asked, "Well, why didn't you have permit?" "Well, I was never told I had to." You were never told you had to? This man is the chairman of the planning board in the town of Neversting. Who on that board is going to believe that he does not know where to walk and what he has to do? He has people that can run before him. He doesn't know he needs permits? He doesn't know he has to do certain things for certain items? Are you kidding me? He's the planning board chairman in the town of Neversting. Are we even going to think about that? Thank you.
Your name, please?
Hello, uh, my name is Brett Soroka. I'm at 22 Marcus Road. Um, I've been there for about almost a year now. Uh, so I haven't experienced years of these events. Uh, only two or a few others, so I may not have been around. I can tell you that the one on June 12th was plenty loud. I could hear the thumping bass inside my house for the duration of the event. Um, although it was not as loud as the one that had happened earlier in the fall. And I can also tell you, I've been a professional musician. I've played at many weddings, and that they get quite loud, and they can get quite out of hand. And in addition, so in addition to the noise there, the other party, I was away for that, but that's also very concerning to me. People run up to my property, that I have liability issues with those damage. Um, who knows what could happen there? Uh, and I do travel for work often, so if I'm not there, people can hear from my own family. I have no idea what might be happening.
This is, I'm going to speak after. This is Mr. George Lawrence. His name? This is George Lawrence on the phone. This is the one that cut down his tree and put his path on. He would like to make a statement here. So, Mr. Lawrence, they're, they're giving you two minutes, so if you want, I'm going to put the phone up on the counter, and you can speak, okay?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to thank you for letting me, uh, speak, and I'd like to thank the neighbors for calling, uh, these, uh, matters to my attention. Uh, we, we have owned the property for about thirty-three years. Uh, when we first bought it, we went to a lot of trouble to, uh, keep it relatively private. On the big weekends, uh, during the summer, we hired our own security guard, really to, um, uh, tell people that it was private property and to stop any kind of random use of the falls, because it's tremendously dangerous property, because of the very, very steep slopes, and of course, the waterfall itself. The rocks adjoining it are wet, and, uh, there is tremendous, uh, need for care. And, uh, we used it with friends at various sites, so we're practically telling everybody where you have to step, because there were very, very many places for entry on that property. It was owned by Mr. Dick Pullerton. Uh, he had a mountain climbing bench, actually. Uh, after he went to San Francisco, uh, he, uh, spent some time actually going to Japan randomly and climbing mountains. So, it was always very, very rugged property, and it was a bit of hazard. And to have these kinds of intrusions with liquor involved on this commercial venture in this residential zone is really basic. Uh, mixing local uses that don't have to be mixed. And, uh, it should, this application for public use with all these intrusions into, uh, this dangerous property should be stopped, because it is, it is an accident waiting to happen. And, uh, these accidents can be fatal. There can be actual loss of life on this property. Thanks. I appreciate your, uh, time. You're getting paid.
Thank you.
That was Mr. Lawrence. So, Thelma's at 540 Ulster Heights Road, right across the street, from the chaos that they caused. So, a few things, just want to clear some things up. Let's talk about the police. So, I have footage, so I don't care what they say, from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM of all the cars, because I got all the headlights. That Ring camera, great thing. So, if anybody wants to see it, I could forward it along. So wherever they decide to say about it, let me know. I'll load it. Two, I woke up the next day to being with, "The police are on your property." So how would you like to wake up in the morning, and the police are on the property, investigating assault? So, Peyton drove down, came back with the road. I have the video. I'll show it to you. State troopers are on my property. Eligible police are on Mr. Lawrence's property. I asked her to stop. She gave the phone to the trooper. I attended the trooper first. "What are you doing on the property? Because you have no right to be there." He said, "We're investigating an assault that took place at Wager Farms last night." We have the person that got the shit beat out of him, right there, and actually have the video. And they're looking for the trail cams that Mr. Coon put on Mr. Lawrence's property. This is what the trooper told him. I said, "Okay, and the other thing is, can you confirm what was going on at this party? Because we're being told there's about a hundred people, forty cars." He said, "Yes, I can confirm that." And a car was, I guess, destroyed. That's what all the glass and the baseball bats, that's apparently what happened. But now I'm taking liability. The police are on my property because of these people. They're on Lawrence's property because of these people. I know, I know, okay? The state trooper board, we obviously can't get it until they said December. Don't know why. Maybe he knows the truth. I don't know. The eligible report is wrong. Phil Matrician stated it in the paper. That was wrong. The assault took place at Wager Farms. And the trooper, I believe Mr. Raleigh, put it in the paper. The trooper report will verify that, okay? Couple other things. Um, he's a liar. Empty. And I'm going to tell you the two things that it'll show you.
No, maybe.
First, he lied. He lied about not having weddings on any other day but Saturday. He stood in front of the ZVA last week. So, it happened, and they said, and I quote, "We never have any weddings on any other day but Saturday." Last Thursday at 1:00, Tony and Morelli, Wayne Story got married at Wager Farms. Never happens, right? And guess what? I have pictures. I forwarded them on to the building department, so hopefully you guys get all those pictures as well, okay? He took trees from Mr. Lawrence's property. He filled a pad on Mr. Lawrence's property. The trees that he is talking about, they can't be removed, because they're on Mr. Lawrence's property. So, we'll see if they get cut down next, okay? Like my wife said, when is, when is enough enough? He's lying. He's taking things from people. He does whatever he wants, because he's still Coon. Enough is, who cares anymore? Like Peyton said, there's no reason that anyone should be listening to this. You, the board, Jonathan, you told us as a group in an email that we would be notified when he was going to have this noise study. Never happened. He was not supposed to have a wedding. You guys said it was supposed to be simulated, hundred and ten people, fifty-five cars. So whatever he did should be thrown out, and none of it is useful. None of it. He did whatever he wanted to do, and he said, "Here, I don't care if you like it or not." That's what he did, and we're going to sit there and accept that. That blows my mind. You guys told him what to do, and he does whatever he wants to do, and we're talking about it.
Thank you.
Well, I'm also just saying, you know, two, his Airbnb, it's got a third story. No fire exp, no suppression system, no sprinklers, no, no fire extinguishers, no emergency lighting, no egress. I sent pictures to the building department. Go to reealer.com, click the video, go to Facebook, type in 540 Ulster Heights Road. They don't take you for a tour through the place. It is absolutely illegal and not a good place. 541, sorry. 541, I think 541, Ulster Heights Road. We'll see for yourself.
Thank you. I will take a motion to continue the public hearing.
She wanted to speak.
Who?
Well, she's the applicant, so she can speak.
Yes. I'll take a, a motion.
I'll make that motion.
On a second. I'll second the motion.
I think there's someone else who wanted to say something.
Do you want to speak?
Ms. Constable. Hi.
Your name, please?
Mel Peifley. Soon to be Neville in seventeen days, if that happens. I'm supposed to get every night at Wager Farm. In seventeen days. I don't know how many hours, but I can't sleep. I can't eat. I'm rarely working, because I have to figure things out. I am sorry that all of you guys are coming through with it. And I'm sorry that the Lakers are put in the middle of this as well. However, how am I supposed to guarantee my guests come to see our special day with Neville? That we've been waiting for this day for two years. I'm a COVID bride. It was bad enough I had to sit there and postpone my wedding for last year due to COVID. And I was looking forward to this year, but then we have this. I didn't even know. I have to find out. Tell me where I'm supposed to figure out where I'm going to have my wedding if you guys don't approve anything. Where? Because nowhere in Ulster County is able to give anything, because all COVID brides are already booked. Or no one wants to live because of COVID and the new strand. So tell me where I'm supposed to have my guests even staying for that matter, because Honors Haven is all booked. It's booked till September, end of September. What am I supposed to do in seventeen days? And the ZVA meeting is not until the 3rd. I get told on the 3rd, nothing is to go? Tell me, tell me, if this was your door, this was your song, if this was your crib getting married, what would you do? What would you do?
I would ask the Coons. I would ask the Coons.
They're the ones that lied to you.
Just tell me, but no one should have to go through this headache.
Nope.
It's a headache. Neither should we. I understand that. I totally understand.
Okay, so direct everything to me, please. All, all to me, please. I don't have an answer.
No one has an answer. No one has an answer. But I am a bride, and it's room to be in seventeen days. I cannot get. There is nothing for me to do. I'm caught in this. There is nothing I can do. And I'm not trying to be mean to the Coons. They've been there. They've been great, but at the same time, I'm the person in a residential area that has had a wedding up the road too. And I can understand the music part. I can, because my windows were shattering as well. And that was a totally different event from Wager Farm or anything. I can understand. But at the same time, we have four more brides other than me.
What do you mean?
That we're COVID brides that are supposed to be getting married. I'm not just sticking up for myself. I'm sticking up for other brides.
I'm sorry. Can I ask you a question? Are you saying there's, you're having a four-person, uh, four-couple ceremony at this wedding?
No, no. I'm a bride speaking up for other brides.
Gotcha.
I'm a bride and a Coon speaking up for other brides that I don't even know, know about, I mean this. But I do. Thirty days, I have been not eating, sleeping. I haven't even spent time with my children, because I'm at wondering what the hell I need to do to figure out what I need to do to make sure I have my guest. And I can't get nothing, but I'm in contract with Coons. So tell me. Because obviously, this has been going on for some time. And I mean, I'm not trying to be mean, but everyone has a fault here. Everyone. I'm angry, and I'm mad, and I'm disappointed in a lot of people in these days. And it shouldn't be so trying during COVID pandemic. Nonetheless, to have this mess go on. I am asking, and I really will, if I have to get Roland V for transportation to negate that for August 7th so I can get my wedding, I'll do that. If you need your sound study or anything like that on my desk, bring it. Don't ruin my day! I really want to know! I really want to know! I'm sorry. I know Michelle, she is the sweetest woman. She's the sweetest person you'll ever meet. Unfortunately, she's caught up in this. It's very unfortunate because they cannot have weddings there. They've been telling her they can, they can, they can, they can't. They do not have approval to have weddings. She's caught up in it. So her six other brides and these people have booked this year. What is she supposed to do? Whose fault is that? It's not, I'm sorry, Michelle, not ours. Not ours. It's theirs. Because it's been lying to her saying, "Oh, we can have events." You can't have events. You can't have events. I'm sorry, they don't have approval, they can't have events. So what do I have to do? Wait till the 3rd to find out final approval that I can't have anything? And for them to call because they've gotten a call saying they can't have it because certain things don't meet? Tell me, tell me. Because I can't even have it at my own yard because my slope just goes down into a big cliff. I can't even have a big tent on my own yard. I, I can't. The time, the, the, the money, the, the, everything spent. I have boxes all the way up to my basement downstairs. Waiting to get unpacked so I can have my debt. And I understand their point. I get it. Because I'm a resident too, and I wouldn't like it. However, there is four, five brides caught up in this. I don't care if you do something after those brides, but don't ruin it. Don't, don't, please, don't. Because we're all caught up into it.
Thank you. I think we'll move to keep the public hearing open.
Yeah, Donald Moses.
I don't get motion.
Donald, open.
Donald, open. Do we need a second?
Second.
Donald Moses.
No.
I do.
Okay.
I do.
Yes.
Oh, check this.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Mr. Chair.
That was a name, right?
If any of the public wishes to make their videos part of the public record, they could email them to the pla, uh, the building department.
Planning Board.
Planning Board. Mary to the Planning Board. We'll also view them as well.
I'll make your presentation. For the record, I think two things have to be stated. The Moses were kind enough in past times when we were, when we had guests that were conducting weddings, I think 2019, to ask us if we would give them a list of dates so that if they wanted to go to their house in Lake George, they could on that weekend. And we provided that. And they did go to Lake George a number of those weekends. So they may hear some noise when they are home on weekends, but for a lot of the weekends, they did not hear the weather. That's number one. Secondly, Mrs. Moses provided a recording of birds, which I enjoyed too. I, I, I have them, and also of the, of the band playing. That recording was at the property line right on the road, not at the house. Uh, we had that recording as well, I believe. Uh, so the town called requires that we do the noise study at the closest property line. Closest property line is the Moses property line, which is why it is, why we did the noise study there. Uh, it seemed appropriate also to do all the lines. We did not do the other ones to the east. Because they'll be a little bit. The closest property line according to the code is your property line, or it becomes not your property, which is the highway, the county road right on the west side of the road. That's the point. And that's also the most direct, closest spot is the one right in front of what we did. Okay. Um, then I wanted to note that we have, uh, based on, you know, uses that we've had in the past, we, there's never been an incident, there's never been police call for the site. It's never been a problem. We've never had a complaint. Robin has no complaints on file? I also want to point out that I was, it is true that I am the planning board chairman of a different town, not the town of Worsing. Town goes very, from, from, go to go. I would have thought you have known that.
Sure you did.
Especially, especially with the young lady working in town.
Correct your comments to the board, please.
Aye, correct. There is a trail cam on my property. On my property, our property. That's it. That trail cam came in very useful on the night that there was an incident, which we'll speak to in a second. It is true that there was a wedding ceremony with six people last week. Right. A ceremony. Not a reception, not an event. On the stone patio next to the water, where they typically are held. From friends of ours, we allowed them to do it. Nothing wrong with that. You have to also remember that when you hear public comments, you're hearing half the story. In fact, you're hearing lots of story. And not so much in the word, way of facts. Those will be corrected at the right time on the right venue. The town asked us to do the noise study, sorry, I'll look here, the noise study and the traffic study. We didn't offer to do that. You asked us to do that, so we did it. I don't know how to do a noise study and traffic study. You had to employ and pay these engineers to do that, which is money out of our pocket. Trying to do the right thing, we're doing what we were asked to do. We want to know if this noise is a problem. Simple as that. With respect to Michelle, we've had many conversations when, when, since 2014, when we had a guest at the house wanted to do a wedding, we said yes, do a wedding in the barn. We've done that to as many as eight times with, with guests over the past six years, as you know. And when Michelle came to us and wanted to book the wedding, it was two years ago. And it was for last year, and that was canceled because of COVID, so it was pushed to this year. We had no idea as many events law or that any of this was going to take place. So yeah, she's in the middle, but we are also in the middle. I don't think that's quite fair.
Especially because there's members on the board that haven't attended our event.
Well, they, they, yes, I mean, there's some people here are probably familiar with the site and, and know that, how it's conducted and how we handle it. That's all I'd like to say. Uh, Elizabeth, would you like to say anything?
Hi, everybody. My name is Elizabeth Matrician. Um, I just wanted to touch on the party that was held at Wager on July 3rd. Um, my, well, my, I guess, my parents, um, were away that weekend. They were in Hague at their other property that they have. Um, I, it did start at my house. The cops did come. They asked if I would turn the music down. It was not shut down. Um, but at that point, I just moved into Wager. They had no idea that I was going there. Um, they asked me not, if I was going to relocate it, not for it to be at Wager, but I ignored their, um, their request. I did have it there. Um, regarding the police call at 3:00 AM, yes, the police were called, but it was not because of the party. It was because of an assault that had happened. And if you guys would get your facts straight, it was because no one at the party was involved with this. It was over a girl completely separate from the party. It just happened to take place at Wager Farm. Um, didn't have any, no, it was, it was completely me. So for them, for people to say like, oh, it's all Wager's fault, it's not Wager's fault, I take all responsibility. Um, everybody here was 21. Y'all, you guys made mistakes in your life. And this has been a mistake that I learned from. Will it happen again? Absolutely not. I've apologized to them. I apologize to you guys for causing this thing that should have never happened if I just fought it through. So if anybody has a question, you guys can contact me. I was there. I can assure you that no one ran across anybody's properties at all. There was probably 10 people there when the cops got there. The one person that got arrested was running in the middle of the road, but no one was running across anybody's yard. The last car that had left, left at 5:00 AM, so that would answer Mr. Moses' question about why there was activity there at 5:00 AM. But besides that, everybody has left.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board have anything to discuss?
What's going on with the ZVA? Can someone bring me up the speed on that?
I, I am a chief of the mat.
I was a ZVA.
Yeah, I'd like that one.
Okay. Um, so the ZVA framed a couple of issues. Um, well, let me go back. Mr. Coon says, I recall his application applies to reuse areas in the ZVA. It's also an interpretation that the bar is not an event decade. And so, uh, the ZVA, the ZVA has framed the issue for him whether or not this is, uh...
Here's a copy of the ZVA minutes of what took place then.
So, uh, you may not need me then.
We'll, we'll address that. Does any other board member want to address anything or say anything?
Uh, the only thing I'm, I'm waiting for is just to get results from our consultant. That's really, um, why I voted for three minutes because that may shed further light on the evidence. That may change that, so let's see all the reasons why.
Mr. Coon.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. But, uh, you're now 700 dollars behind on escrow. And we're asking for 3,000 dollars to argue going forward since Jonathan over there, he's over, he orders a lot. And, uh, so for professional fees.
So what are you asking for?
3,000.
Uh, that doesn't surprise me. Um, and I have to say Jonathan does very good work. Mr. Lawson did very good work from what I can see, very precise uh, with the comments after the meetings and suggestions and makes it very clear. But I really do appreciate that. Uh, I will bring a check to the planning department for that. And I'm hoping that, uh, that should be sufficient to see through to a response from this board within the time allowed.
Thank you. There being nothing else? We will, we have something about a pre-meeting at 6:30. Do you want to address that?
Oh, yeah. We used to have, um, way, way back in the past, remember? Our last meeting? We would have workshop meetings at 6:30.
Yes.
So I had asked John, was that advertised? We weren't sure, that's why we didn't start anything till 7:00 tonight, so...
It was advertised over January.
Right, I didn't know, we didn't know if they were with COVID. So has it been advertised already?
It was in January, yeah.
Okay, beautiful, then we can continue to have those workshops at 6:30 where sometimes we go into a little, not executive session, an attorney, client meeting if you have legal questions that we need to address privately. Okay?
I'll, I'll plan to be, uh, at 10:00, 6:30 as well. This is actually my first in-person meeting because I became town planner in March. When all meetings began.
That's to the minutes of the last meeting. Do I have a motion to approve one of that motion? Contact him then. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just one final note if I may, Chairman. It's been suggested several times tonight that we should not be here. This board should not be hearing this application. I would submit to this board that we are trying to get approval from this board as you have requested, as your town board envisioned with the adoption of this local law uh, that requires approval from this board. We are doing everything that this board has asked previously at the previous meeting in May. Um, prior to the events in June, there were no events this year. So when this law was adopted in December, we did the right thing and tried to apply that. Yes, there has been issues, and there are issues that have happened from that. We are, as the ZVA, I would submit that that issue is separate from this planning board's review. And I believe they agree with that, and we don't want to talk about it at all. Um, we are trying to assuage any concerns that this board has as well as the public by going through the proper review channels and getting responses, which we will. Yeah, lots of notes, I'm sure you saw me take notes very early on. So we'll have a detailed response that's prepared for and submitted for the tax of that I can report.
And also, I, I would just throw in, we didn't discuss everything in my memorandum of July sort of in a boardroomy fashion. But I don't want to speak for the board, but I believe they'd like you to address all, all of my comments. We didn't talk about, uh, fireability co-compliance at the barn itself.
That's really important.
That's right.
I think they should be at least providing narrative about what they plan to do.
Absolutely. That's one of the things that we tend to have a discussion set up. Keep the all discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would stay in the dill public hearing for next month. Can we move on to a meeting, please?
We did, uh, I'll entertain a motion to, uh...
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We will see everyone next month.
Would it be okay if the traffic, I mean, the, uh, noise consultants just talked to our own itself?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, we can, if you can just ask.